All right. Good morning, Chair Harrington, and over to you. Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is meeting this regular session October 17, 2023. Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington, and I'll announce Commissioner Treese is excused on vacation.
Our next item on the agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to two minutes a person. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Yes, we do, Chair Harrington. First up, we have Dale Feek. Dale?
Dale, now your policy is always to speak first and then give the handouts, and you keep violating that policy.
I break rules just like you are, so we're all together.
Oh, Dale, now come on.
But we have fun, don't we, Commissioner Willie? Chair Harrington and Commissioners, especially you, Jerry Willie, District Four, my Commissioner. I sent you two emails. You need to read both of them because one of them has attachments, and the latest one does not have attachments. In order to make sense out of the last one I sent to you, you got to read the first one to get to the attachments. Although I did, I think, include the attachments in what you received, but I may have missed one of them. The most important part is what, Commissioner Willie, you were involved in in the negotiation for Intel and taxes, I call them giveaways, but all that kind of stuff, and also the presentation that was made by Jill Island and Northwest, Northwest, Tanya, anyway. They made a presentation way back in 2013. I went there and asked the first question in the open meeting of West Side Economic Alliance, and it's very clear that that Northwest study on Intel's impact on the economy was biased. It was flawed. And so what I ended up given, and that's been used and quoted over and over, okay? And so what I've given you then on links on the first of it is an opposing point of view, and if you read them, as I think Commissioner Phi will, if you read those, you'll understand why it was flawed, okay? And so please do that. And then the documents that I ask you to read will support what I'm saying. I wrote CEO of Intel, Cranchit, it took me three certified letters to get to him, but I finally got a letter to him, and he replied to it, and then I wrote a reply to him, an open letter to the public. I didn't send it directly to him, but I put it in the newspaper. And the climate protection program at the state is there. Please take a look at that. So thank you for taking your time, not only now, but take your time, as Officer Phi will, and study those documents. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Feek. Would any member, other members of the audience in the auditorium, which should provide public comment on, for two minutes on any count or rally topic? Not seeing anyone raise hands or come forward. Would there any members online via Zoom which should provide public comment for two minutes on any count or rally topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of 14 items: two sets of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, two from Health and Human Services, one from Human Resources, five from Fleet, Facilities, Fleet, and Parks. Thank you very much to the team for your due diligence there, and three items from Land Use and Transportation. Would...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. This is a proposal to appoint Peter Hanley to serve on the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to this appointment?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we're moving on to public hearings. Today, we have three different public hearings, and the first is with regard to sale of three county-owned properties. And we're going to start with a presentation from Mr. Greg Wyman of our staff. Please take it away.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Real Estate and Planning Program Manager for Washington County under the Facilities, Fleet, and Parks Department. The City of Sherwood has agreed to the sale of three county-owned properties for the sum of $53,433 to be used for the development of a new public works facilities and regional stormwater management. The three parcels were acquired by the county through tax foreclosure and are within the City of Sherwood. The properties total 29.39 acres and were part of a site formerly used as a leather tannery operation from the late 1940s through the early 1990s and known to have ground contamination. The City of Sherwood has received a brownfield grant to help with the cleanup process and has agreed to take responsibility once deed is transferred. The agreed-upon purchase price is part of the City of Sherwood's Resolution Number 2007-007 and includes payment to cover taxes owed at the time of foreclosure and county expenses incurred on the property since the foreclosure. Oregon Revised Statute 271-330 authorizes any political subdivision to relinquish title to any of its property not needed for public use to any governmental body. This statute requires advertising of the proposed transfer of property acquired through tax foreclosure. This requirement has been met, and a public hearing is being held. After which objections are heard, if any, the county may proceed with this transfer. And with that, I would take any questions that there may be on this.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this staff report? Okay, at this time then, I would like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with regard to this topic?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would anyone in the auditorium which should provide public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes? If you've heard the staff presentation, not seeing any hands or anyone coming forward. Would any members online which should provide public comment on this public hearing as the staff presentation, as you've just heard? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will close this public hearing and ask for a motion to proceed with approving the sale of these three county-owned properties, tax IDs, as documented in our packet, to the City of Sherwood for $53,433, and authorize the board chair or designate to execute the deeds.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to a similar but different item. Please take it away, Mr. Wyman.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I am the Real Estate and Planning Program Manager with Washington County under the Facilities, Fleet, and Parks Department. The City of Sherwood has agreed to the conveyance of three county-owned properties for zero consideration and will dedicate these to public right-of-way for road use. Pictured are the three properties that are in question. The three parcels were acquired between 2015 and 2023 by the county through tax foreclosure and are within the City of Sherwood. Oregon Revised Statute 271-330 authorizes any political subdivision to relinquish title to any of its property not needed for public use to any governmental body. This statute requires advertising of the proposed transfer of property acquired through tax foreclosure. This requirement has been met, and a public hearing is now being held. After which, any comments are heard, county may proceed with the transfer. With that, I would again ask if there are any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on this staff report? Okay, seeing none, I would like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see any members of public sign up in the room, but would anyone in the auditorium which should provide public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes as the presentation, as you've just heard? Not seeing any hands or anyone coming forward. Would any members online via Zoom which should provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing, as you've heard the staff present? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will...
Go for the question. Oh, I'm sorry.
I will close the public hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Move for the question action.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer of three county-owned properties with tax IDs as documented to the City of Sherwood and authorize the board chair or designate to execute the deeds. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero.
I do have one question. That map, you've used that picture a lot. Where is that?
That is part of the slide deck that has been provided by the CAO's office and Clerk Moss. It is a great slide.
It's part of the template that we have for presentations.
But we don't know where that site is.
Well... I know where it is.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, so if you see the road on the right, that is Farmington. And then to the left is South Hillsboro. You'll see up north, and then just to the right is Cooper Mountain. You just see the beginning of the slope up.
And off in the distance, are we looking at Mount Hood or Mount Adams? Do you know? Or could that be St. Helens? I can't...
It's probably St. Helens, so you're looking kind of east, northeast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you. Yes. All righty.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Next, we're going to move on to our third public hearing, and might we possibly have Stacy Shetler on Zoom or some different LUT staff members today? Oh, I see. Steven Roberts, our Director of Land Use and Transportation, coming forward. Welcome.
Get ourselves situated. Good morning, Chair. I'm Steven Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation. I'm joined by John Kidd, who's one of our survey technicians, and John actually is the person who does all the real work on...
It's a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Kidd.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
On these kinds of issues, so... I think Stacy knows, yeah.
Stacy's just been the front man.
Right. Yeah, so fortunately Stacy's at a conference, so he's doing good work.
Not unfortunately. It's good, yes.
No, no, it is fortunate. Yeah, absolutely. So I get to walk you through our presentation this morning. So thank you for your time, and we'll just jump right in here. So this is regarding the legalization of a portion of Southwest Chapman Road as County Road Number 3342. So Chapman Road is located southwest of Sherwood, and it runs between Highway 99 and then runs along the South County line. The road is maintained by Washington County, but there is some uncertainty as to the legal location of a portion of the roadway, and that's the small sliver. It's kind of hard to read, actually, on the slide, but it's the circled area on your map there. The roads, oops, let's see. So research and analysis that our survey team has done of the record documents that are available, along with some survey fieldwork, concluded that a portion of the legal right-of-way is uncertain and needs to be clarified. And just as an FYI, this is located in Commissioner Rogers' District, District Three. Couple of quick findings. Chapman Road has been traveled in its current location for nearly 100 years. It does qualify for legalization under Oregon Revised Statutes 368.201 through 368.221, and for a variety of reasons, we have concluded that 40 feet is an appropriate width for the legalization based on the existing documentation that was available. It was originally established as County Road 219, and as I've mentioned earlier, or may have mentioned earlier, the county road notes contain numerous errors, and it just simply cannot be retraced. There are no permanent structures that predate the traveled alignment of the road in the proposed right-of-way, and the adjacent property owners were notified per the statute, and to our knowledge, there is no known opposition to this legalization. We did have one inquiry from a community member asking if the road was going to be widened, but it isn't. We're just simply, as you said, putting the records to match the traveled roadway. And then based on the foregoing facts, our request is to have your board conduct the public hearing, and then after the hearing, to approve the resolution in order to legalize Southwest Chapman Road as County Road Number 3342. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Oops.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on what this item is about or this presentation? Seeing none, with that, I will open the public hearing on this matter. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the back of the room. Would any member in the auditorium which should provide public comment on this public hearing as the staff report, as you've just heard? Give you a moment to raise your hand or come forward. Not seeing anyone in the room. Would any member online via Zoom which should provide public comment on this public hearing as the staff report, as you've just heard? Give you a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Oh, all righty then. And with that, we will close the public hearing. And before us, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution in order to legalize Southwest Chapman Road, or at least this portion of it as highlighted, as County Road 3,342. We have a motion?
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Okay, enough of that land use and transportation stuff. We're going to move on to Health and Human Services, people matters. Okay, we have an item here to approve the financial plan for the Center for Addictions Treatment and Triage. And this is a project that this board has been totally behind since 2019, and our staff all over the county has been doing a great deal of work. We're very proud of what you have done and look forward to your continuing to champion all of this with the presentation today.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Mira Semantel. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. We're really grateful to be here today to present this updated financial plan and an action item for a resolution in order to approve it. The presentation that staff will be going through is fairly duplicative of what you saw at Work Session on September 19th, but for the public, it'll be an opportunity to hear this most recent information. So with me, I have Nicholas O'Conne, who is the Division Manager for our Behavioral Health Division, and Kristen Burke, who is the Project Manager for the Center for Addictions Triage and Treatment Project. I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mira. Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nick O'Conne, and I'm the Division Manager for Behavioral Health. For the record, for today's presentation, we're going to do a really quick overview of what was presented at Work Session on September 19th related to our financial strategy, and then to also request a board action to consider approving the resolution in order adopting the financial plan for CAT. As a review from the meeting that we had on September 19th, we presented an addendum to our financial analysis that was created in January of 2022. The addendum really captured updates in two key areas around the capital construction estimates and also the project resources. In that addendum, there were no changes to the strategy that we have at hand for building and maintenance costs and also for the operation of our program once it opens. During the Work Session, we discussed how the budget numbers now are based on real bids from the subcontractors, as we've been working with our general contractor. Previously, the bids that we, or the estimates that we had were with, from professional cost estimators, and we're feeling that these are much more firm at this point. We're really not expecting any significant changes to the capital construction costs going forward based on the estimates that we're getting. There was a question that came up in the meeting related to the guaranteed maximum price and when we would be achieving, when we would be receiving that, and we'll be receiving those next year. So in March of 2024, we'll have the guaranteed maximum price for the community services building renovation, and then in June of '24, we will have the guaranteed maximum price in hand for the intensive services building. During the Work Session, we talked a lot about the resources that we currently have in hand and what we'll need to complete the capital project that we're working through. At the time of the meeting, we discussed that $7.5 million that we have committed are from our states and our federal legislatures, and at this time, these funds are committed, but they're not necessarily secured at this time. So these are the funding areas that we're going to be monitoring most closely. At this time, though, if we receive all of the projected funding, we're actually going to have a $600,000 surplus for the project. So we're feeling like we're in a really good shape. As we're looking forward, though, for additional budget adjustments, we're already looking at how we can mitigate any potential risk related to them. And so at this point in our budget, we have $4.3 million of contingency that is built in for any additional adjustments that are coming up going forward. We also have grant applications in place with Trillium to have additional capital and startup costs covered, and then we also have a recent Measure 110 request in that would be additional funding toward the capital of this project in the event that the federal earmark does not come through. Any surplus that we have in our capital construction costs, we're planning to apply those to the startup costs, and we're actually actively working with funders to be identifying startup costs so that we can support our providers as we're lifting up these programs. And finally, our board request today is to consider approving the resolution in order that would formally adopt the Center for Addictions Triage and Treatment, Financial Analysis, and Funding Strategy. It would direct the use of all opioid settlement funds received by Washington County to be used for capital and ongoing operational costs and expenses for the CATs, and it would also formally memorialize the direction of this board and a long-term financial stability of CATs. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with regard to our CAT proposal and this finance plan?
I don't have any questions on this. I just want to say congratulations on the work that you've got taken care of so far, certainly looking forward, and I think we're all very excited about getting this facility open and ready to go. So thank you very much for your hard work on this, and congratulations on the funding that you've been able to get as well. If you have a little bit left over, I got one little place I... It's called a trail, but that's okay. Just advocating, but anyway.
As we know, being outside is good for one's mental health.
Absolutely.
You've taught us well. Commissioner Rogers?
One question. I echo Commissioner Willie's comments.
Oops, your mic.
We've worked on this a long time.
Got to hit the button. There we go.
Yeah, I'm brand new. I don't understand anything that's going on. I echo Commissioner Willie's comments. We've worked on this project a long time. My question goes back to the opioid settlement funds. Since it's somewhat fluctuating, I think you know somewhat what it is, but there's probably going to be other... Do we need to have some qualifying language that if not all needed, it can go to other public health purposes, instead of saying, nope, it's just going to go to this particular facility? And the reason I'm concerned, obviously, is we have other public health needs, and if you've got excess funds and you're tied up in a project that's not needing them, it doesn't seem like a very good financial move. So talk to me about that for me.
Thank you for that question. So our financial modeling for the services, so we've really looked at the opioid settlement dollars in two ways. One is what will support the capital construction, which is really the money that we'll receive up until the point that we open, and then the settlement dollars that we'll receive after the program opens, and how do we use those. We have some services at this point that are unfunded because those are supporting people who are indigent or were not able to determine their insurance, or they're not Medicaid. Anybody who's Medicaid, and we've been working with our CCO partners, and we have a really solid plan for covering the cost of those services. But in order to make sure that the program is available to all residents of Washington County, we need some additional dollars that aren't tied to a person's insurance, and that's what the opioid settlement dollars are going to do for this project, is really helping to cover folks that we don't know their insurance status, or they're uninsured, or their commercial insurance won't pay for the services. And so as we've gone through and modeled it, we expect to use 100% of the opioid dollars. The other thing to know, the opioid dollars are going to diminish over time, and so the amount we're receiving right now is kind of the peak amount, and then the annual amount we'll receive will go down each year for the next 18 years. And so we're planning for that and figuring out how to make sure that we've got a smooth glide path to make sure the services are funded. But at this point, we're modeling to use 100% of the dollars for services.
Simply say thank you, and I wanted that on the record because you've brought that exact information to us before, but one might assume that we're taking all the dollars and plowing them into the capital, and that's not the case.
No.
So thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Phi, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, and that is to say to the staff, great job of what you're doing. I echo Chair Harrington said in the beginning of this, that you're doing great work, and thank you for that tour, the three of you. And I think I left a little early while everyone was there, but it was a great, great tour, and you did your job right. And I don't have any questions about what you're requesting. I intend to support your request because I know the impact we will have on Washington County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. I join my colleagues in greatly appreciating the work that has gone in to propose this project, design this project, engage all of the stakeholders, including our direct community members, those who, whose families have been touched by addiction and mental health difficulties, and as well as those neighbors who live near these two buildings. In addition to the great work for opening the Center for Addiction Triage and Treatment, you've done a great job of helping us all understand how the Hawthorne Walk-In Mental Health Crisis Center and the ongoing services there will fold into the Community Services Building. I want to take a moment to assure our community that this very same team of people and everyone else within the Health and Human Services Department, as well as our teams, part of our Housing Department, and across our organization are working together to help all of us navigate and support people who are experiencing addiction now on our local streets. We would love for the construction of this facility to be complete sooner than the current planned 2025 opening, but we cannot magically create the workforce that is needed to build these structures. In the interim, I know through the Behavioral Health Network and the Measure 110 that the availability of services in our community is increasing for meeting the very real needs now. In addition, our Housing and Homelessness Teams continue to work and engage with community members who may be living on the streets and suffer from addiction to get into stable housing and to get connected with the service availability now. And I know that we continue to need to educate folks throughout our community, including fellow elected officials, as you recently did in a thank you opportunity for state legislators who approved the $5 million grant funding that your presentation highlighted. And there is another such event... And there is another such event coming up next week that two of my colleagues will be covering for us. So thank you in advance for that. Really terrific work. It's a great proposal. Thank you for refining all of the cost estimates through the best-known methods as time goes on securing the contracts and moving forward. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution in order approving the Center for Addiction's Triage and Treatment Financial Plan and the use of the National Prescription Opioid Litigation Settlement Funds for this program.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And I know if Commissioner Treese was here, she would be voting in favor of this as well. So you know, you have a board that is thoroughly not only behind your efforts, but stands with you each and every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We truly appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to our second public comment period of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to address the board for up to five minutes. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us today?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room, so I'll do one last call. Anyone in the auditorium which should provide public comment for up to five minutes on any countervailing topic, give you just a moment to raise your hand or come forward. Not seen anyone, so we have two hands online. The first is Holly Lawson. Holly, can you hear us?
Yes.
Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Okay, great. My name is Holly Lawson, and I reside in Washington County. Thank you for having me here today. I am within Mr. Rogers' area, and I'm a mother of a son who is autistic, and I'm also the daughter of my mother who also has a disability. And I'm here today because I am requesting a waiver of the system development charges that are associated with the construction of accessory dwelling units. I'm looking at sustainable housing options for both my mother and my son. And currently in Washington County, there are approximately $15,000 of system development charges that are associated with ADU development. These are the same prices as permitting for new construction. I understand that SDCs are a vital part of maintaining the quality of our public services and infrastructure, and I'm in full support of their intention. It was really nice to hear the work that's currently happening within the Board of Commissioners in Washington County. However, I believe that a waiver would be really appropriate for the Washington County As I mentioned, the construction more short term would be for my mother, who's aging and currently receives disability services. She has an in-home personal support care worker. She currently resides in Florida. Last summer, she fell out of her bed and was in rehab for over a month because she broke her foot. So my goal is to get her here as soon as I can so that I can help support her. And I also mentioned my son, who is autistic. He also has an intellectual disability. He receives disability services through Washington County. And I continue to think, you know, on a regular basis about his future, thinking about where he might live as he starts to transition into adulthood. He's kind of between. He's already hitting puberty. And I want my goal is to provide a living situation that meets his specific needs and ensures his comfort, safety, and happiness. And so the ADU really is a long-term solution to help support his independence, keeping him close to his support network. And it's come to my attention that there are several municipalities in Oregon, including the city of Tigard, the city of Portland, which have established SDC waiver programs for ADUs. And these programs are intended to encourage the development of ADUs, recognizing their contribution to affordable housing options and the benefits they provide in accommodating changing family dynamics, such as caring for aging parents or children with disabilities. And so in line with that, I believe that the waiver of SDCs from my proposed ADU would be in alignment with the shared community values within Washington County, the Board of Commissioners, and would have a positive outcome for our community. And given the financial burden associated with caring for family members with special needs, the SDCs waived would provide a significant relief and ensure that we're able to invest in a dwelling unit that will best serve both my mother's and son's needs. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have Cole Peterson. Cole, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. My name is Cole Peterson. I am a ADU subject matter expert based in Portland, Oregon. And I knew that Holly was going to be making this request today, so I offered to provide a little bit of kind of an academic municipal context for the SDC waiver based on the lessons learned in Portland. So several jurisdictions have waived SDCs for ADUs, including Portland, Hillsborough, Troutdale, Tigard, Springfield, and Wilsonville, also Gold Beach. In Portland, they waived the SDCs. I should be actually more clear on, in Hillsborough, they just do not have SDCs for ADUs. There's not a waiver. Rather, they just don't have them. In Portland, they chose to waive SDCs beginning in 2010 for ADUs as a means to incentivize their development, and indeed, it worked quite well. And in 2013, after a three-year abatement of the SDCs, they waived them again for another three years, 2016. The city council determined that it was working quite well. They waived it yet again till 2018. In 2018, they decided to waive them indefinitely with the caveat that the ADU could not be or not no portion of the property could be used as a short-term rental because the city's council's goal was to increase the production of housing, not hotel units. So that was a reasonable trade-off that was, you know, that the advocates, I should say, I should, you know, advocates were willing to concede upon in order to have this, you know, friendly policy toward the production of ADUs. SDCs generally have a kind of a regressive, have a regressive impact on ADUs relative to the small impact, infrastructural impact that they have for the small household size. They have a standardized fee structure in place, so they have a disproportionately high cost relative to the impact and relative to the cost of construction. So imagine you're doing $125,000 garage conversion, and all of a sudden, the SDCs play a, you know, 15% of that total construction cost amount for that product, housing unit development relative to, say, a new single-family house where the cost of construction might be $600,000. And so a $15,000 SDC fee is a very small portion of that. And so the type of demographic that you're serving through an SDC waiver are, generally speaking, going to be mom and pop, you know, small-scale homeowners. And SDC waivers have proven to be a really effective strategy in Oregon and also now in California. They waive SDCs for what are called Impact Residential Impact Fees for ADUs. In Washington, the entire state of Washington is removed, is eliminating SDCs or residential impact fees to between 50% for ADUs indefinitely. So this is definitely something that has proven to be an important policy metric or lever for city councils and state legislators to incentivize this affordable housing production forum, which not only is serving market-based affordable housing opportunities, but also providing these critical social needs that Holly alluded to in her personal story. I'll stop there. Thank you so much for considering this.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Would any other member viewing this meeting online via Zoom which should provide public comment on any countervailing topic for up to five minutes? Give you one last chance to utilize the raise hand function. Not seen any additional hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and thank you to members of our community. At this juncture, we're moving on to board announcements. I'll be announcing our upcoming meetings. Next Tuesday, October 24th, there will be a work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, and a board meeting in the evening starting at 6:30. Commissioner Rogers and I will each be away next week. Commissioner Willie will be running those meetings. The following Tuesday, October 31st, we do not have board meetings that day. And then we're into the month of November already. Thursday, November 2nd, will be a board roundtable day. We'll have topics both for Washington County as well as Clean Water Services. It promises to be a full day, starting at 9:00, running into at least the middle of the afternoon. Tuesday, November 7th, we have a work session that will start in the afternoon and then reconvene later in the day after we've held the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, and this board meeting immediately following that meeting. Tuesday, November 14th, we'll have our work session at 9:00 AM, and then picking back up later in the day, and a board meeting at 10:00 AM. Tuesday, November 21st, is the week of Thanksgiving, and we have chosen to not have board meetings that week. Gives everyone a break. Then the following Tuesday, November 28th, we'll have our work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, and a board meeting that evening starting at 6:30 PM. That's all I have for board announcements. Are there any other announcements from board members? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn today's meeting of Tuesday, October 17th.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning, thank you for raising your hands. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. We're hereby adjourned and will reconvene at work session at 11:00. Thank you.